Is Gary here? Did you know that Violet? Meeting is called to order. So today is January 7, 2025. While this meeting is being broadcast via Zoom, oral public comment may only be provided live at the City Council meeting in person. The City Council meeting is available for instant translation in over 50 languages with wordly accessible via mobile phone, computer and video displays by scanning the QR code located on the title page of the agenda in the upper right-hand corner. So back to today's business. City Clerk Guzzetta, please take roll call.
Vice Mayor Barbadillo.
Here.
Councilmember Chua.
Here.
Councilmember Lamb. Councilmember Leon.
Yes, here.
Mayor Montano.
And I am here, thank you. And so thank you, City Clerk Guzzetta. And so before we adjourn to closed session, Assistant City Attorney Creach, please brief the public on the closed session item for today.
Thank you, Mayor. Pursuant to Government Code Section 5495.7.5, you have a conference with labor negotiators. Your city's negotiator is Kelly Parmley, the Human Resource Director. The organization being negotiated with is unrepresented members of the Millpiece employees.
Okay, thank you very much, City Attorney Creach. And so now a call for public comment on the closed session item. So please note that tonight's public comment will be for two minutes. Is there anyone from the pub-- is there any cards?
I have no public speaker cards, Mayor.
Is anyone from the public that would like to make any comments on the closed session item? Seeing none, we will close this and we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Pursuant to Government Code Section 5495.7.5, you have a conference with labor negotiators. Your city's negotiator is Kelly Parmley, the Human Resource Director. The organization being negotiated with is unrepresented members of the Millpiece employees. Okay, thank you very much, City Attorney Creach. And so now a call for public comment on the closed session item. So please note that tonight's public comment will be for two minutes. Is there anyone from the pub-- is there any cards?
I have no public speaker cards, Mayor.
Is anyone from the public that would like to make any comments on the closed session item? Seeing none, we will close this and we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you.
Okay, now it is time for to reconvene. So city attorney, do you have anything to report out?
Thank you, mayor. There's nothing to report out at this time.
Thank you for that. And right now it is 7:21. And we will all rise and do the pledge of allegiance, everyone. Would you like, anybody like to do? I will.
Patrick, in the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands the nation,
under God, give us both liberty and justice for all. Thank you for that. And so now we will have the invocation. And Vice Mayor Barbados, it is your turn to do the invocation. And if you want to have someone else do it, or if you, it's up to you.
Hi, mayor. Good evening. As we gather here today for our first meeting of the year, let us take a moment and pause and reflect on the responsibilities and opportunities that lie ahead of us. We are joined by a newly elected council member. Welcome, Councilmember Lam, whose fresh perspective and dedications we warmly welcome. May our tenure be marked with integrity, vision, and steadfast commitment to serving the community. In this new chapter, the brand new year, let us affirm our collective mission to work diligently and tirelessly for the betterment of our community. May we approach each decision with wisdom and foresight, and always keeping the well-being of our constituents at the forefronts of our mind. Let us embrace the spirit of teamwork, recognizing that our strength lies in our unity. May we listen to one another with open hearts and ears, collaborate with mutual respect, understanding that together we can achieve greater things. As we continue throughout the year, may we strive to maximize community service, ensuring that every action we take contributes positively to the lives of those we represent. Let us be guided in our decision by empathy, fairness, and deep sense of responsibility.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Barbados, for that sincere invocation. Thank you. And now we're moving on to the public forum. So let's, anyone from the public is invited to speak on any item that is not on the agenda. So please note that oral public comment may only be provided live at the city council meeting. And I will limit it to two minutes. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to make any comments? And city clerk, if we have any cards.
Yes, I have two speaker cards. The first is from Mike Colkins, followed by Voltaire Montemayor.
Welcome. Either one.
Thanks. Yeah, ok, machte o merito, gung he fat choy. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I just wanted to say congratulations to William Lan, and thank you to the rest of you guys for doing what you do. I'm one of your planning commissioners, and I'm starting to realize how much you guys put into this job. So I just wanted to wish you a good 2025. Good luck, and we're here to support you. That was it. Thank you.
That is really nice. I think you're the first one who's ever came over here and really, you know, wishing us well for the new year. Thank you so much. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Next, we have Voltaire Montemayor.
Okay, welcome, Mr. Montemayor. I see you at church.
My name is Voltaire Montemayor. Mayor, city council members, welcome. Welcome, and best wishes, city manager and staff. Thank you. Yeah, in, it's related to the invocation and the previous speaker. Let us start a fresh new year. In my case, I realize up to the fact sometimes that we really have to say sorry and thanks, forgive and forget. And we have to be friends again, if that's the case. And we'll move forward. And as I mentioned this, I'm remembering, I always come to city meetings, just congregations, personal dealings, and sometimes I overdo it. Sometimes I'm too aggressive. So for me and for all, I'm speaking for all, let's be good to each other. We really have to say sorry if we made something wrong. So it will be like me, I sometimes, I couldn't sleep. I'm not comfortable if I don't apologize to what I've done, or if I'm too aggressive to anybody. So that's my wish for this new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montemayor. Is there anyone else in the public?
I have no additional public speaker cards, mayor.
No one else? Okay. We'll go ahead and close this. Going down to the reading of the city council code of conduct. Is there anyone in my colleagues that would like to read the code of conduct?
Mayor, we have the announcement of conflict of interest next.
I'm sorry, what did you say? Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying. Oh, that's, I meant to say the conflict of interest. Oh, that's, I meant to say the conflict of interest, not code of conduct.
Thank you, mayor. I ask the mayor and each council member whether he or she has any financial or personal conflict of interest related to any of the items on tonight's agenda.
Vice Mayor Barbado?
None.
Councilmember Chua?
None.
Councilmember Lam?
None.
Councilmember Leanne?
None.
Mayor Montano?
And I am none.
Thank you, mayor. I ask the mayor and the members of the Milpita Council, please disclose any campaign contributions of $100 or more received within the last 12 months from any of the parties entering into contracts with the city on tonight's agenda or contributions received from development project applicants for development projects on tonight's agenda.
Vice Mayor Barbado?
None.
Councilmember Chua?
None.
Councilmember Lam?
None.
Councilmember Leanne?
None.
Mayor Montano?
And I am none.
Thank you, mayor. Let the record reflect, no reported conflicts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Assistant City Attorney Creach. And so now, moving on to the code of conduct. Is there anyone of my colleagues that would like to read the code of conduct? We'll have a councilmember Chua.
Thank you, mayor. The Milpita City Council Code of Conduct. Be respectful and courteous. Model civility. Avoid surprises. Praise publicly and criticize privately. Focus on the issue, not the person. Refrain from using electronic devices while on the dais. Disclose conflicts of interest and affiliations related to agenda items. Separate governing from campaigning. The council speaks with one voice after making policy on issues. Respect the line between policy and administration. Council will hold one another accountable to comply with this code of conduct. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you very much for that. And so now, moving on to the approval of the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to make any changes? Is there anyone that would like to make a motion and a second? So we have, we have a councilmember Chua, councilmember Chua would like to, has made a motion, and we have a second from, second from Vice Mayor Barbado. Okay, so now, we'll call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Barbado?
Aye.
Councilmember Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Lam?
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne?
Aye.
Mayor Montano?
And I am an aye. Thank you for that. And now, moving on to the consent calendar. Staff, do you have any comments, changes?
No comments or changes. Thank you, mayor.
Okay, so is the consent calendar okay as the council sees it? And if not, we will, actually, I would like to make, I would like to pull one, two, two items on the council, if no one else is going to pull any items there. So I would like to pull C-11. And also, I would like to pull C-8. All right, so need to get approval for that. So we have.
I'd like to pull C-9.
So we have C-9 is pulled, C-9 is pulled. So so far, we have C-8, C-9, and 11. And Vice Mayor Barbado?
We will C-14 as well.
And we have C-14. So so far, we have C-9, C-8, C-11, and C-14. And so I need a motion to approve the consent calendar. And the other ones will be pulled at the end of the agenda. We have councilmember Chua.
Motion to approve the consent calendar with C-8, C-9, C-11, and C-14 being pulled.
Is there a second?
Second.
And we have a second by councilmember Leanne. And let's call for the vote.
Mayor, we need to call for public comment.
Oh, public comment? Anyone in the public?
I have no speaker cards. However, is there anyone that wants to speak?
Okay, so we'll close that. And now, we'll go for the motion for the vote.
Vice Mayor Barbado?
Aye.
Councilmember Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Lam?
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne?
Aye.
Mayor Montano?
And I am an aye. Thank you.
And now, we will move on to public hearings. So, city manager?
Thank you. Thank you, mayor. Our first item, number 16, is the certification of election results and annexation of a property located at 612 South Main into one of the city's existing community facilities district. And we have our, from our engineering staff, we have Roberto Alonso here to give, provide the staff report. Roberto.
Good evening, mayor, city council. Roberto Alonso, Pola Works Division Manager, and I'm here to present item number 16, which is to adopt a resolution certifying the election results and adding the property located at 612 South Main Street into Community Facilities District number 2005-1. So the project is located at 612 Main Street on a 2.35-acre site within the Midtown specific plan area. Various permits were approved back in April of 2023, including the site development conditional use permit, best intended map, as well as the environmental assessment. This development consists of, what? From PowerPoint. From PowerPoint. Next slide. Okay. Can you go back like three slides, please? Next slide, please. So the Millerus Community Facilities Act of 1982 was enacted to authorize local agencies to form community facilities districts. These facility districts were created to obtain additional funding. The, the districts are considered to be special tax districts. Once the information is processed, once the formation process is completed, a special tax is imposed on all property within the community facilities, facilities district. This tax is not a property tax. It is in addition to the standard property taxes. The Millerus Community Facilities Act of 1982 was enacted to authorize local agencies to form this community facility districts. Like I mentioned, this special tax is not, is assessed against the property, but it's not based on the value of the property itself. It's based on the San Francisco, Oakland, South area Urban Consumer Price Index during the 12 months prior to the, to February of the fiscal year or 2%, whichever is, is higher.
You speak a little bit closer to that mic? Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. Next slide, please. So the development is located at 612 South Main Street on a 2.35-acre site outside of the Milpita's metro-specific area. Mentioned before, site development and conditional use permits were approved by city council April 4, 2023. And the development consists of 57 townhomes within nine residential buildings. Next slide, please. For this project, annexation number 25, the development is outside the metro-specific plan. And it was condition, under engineering condition of approval number 83, to be annexed into the CFD 2005-1 prior to final map approval. The county's register of voters certified that there were zero registered voters residing within the annexation boundaries. Toll West Coast LLC, as sole owner of the property, voted on this item and agreed to be annexed into the, into the CFD. Next slide, please. Staff recommends that following receipt of the election results from the city clerk for city council to adopt a resolution certifying election results and adding 612 South Main Street to the Community Facilities District number 2005-1, annexation number 25. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Okay, thank you very much for that presentation. So the next thing, we need, we need to follow receipt of elections from the city clerk?
We received one ballot for annexation number 25 to Community Facilities District number 2005-1 Public Services, for a total of three votes that are affirmative in support of the proposition. The proposition passes with three votes in support.
Okay, just, so all you, all you're doing is just saying the vote, the votes. Do we need to take any action on that?
And now, you need to have a motion and second to adopt a resolution to canvass the returns and accept the results of the election.
Okay. All right, so now, that the city clerk has canvassed the ballots, I need a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Is there any, we have a councilmember Lam. Let me see if I could find you here. Okay.
Yeah, my question is, do you guys do any traffic study in that area?
I think we, we have to do the, the vote for the ballots, and then after that, we can ask questions, from that, my understanding.
Okay.
So would you want to go ahead and make a motion for the, to accept the ballots?
Mayor, the, the item that is up is for the acceptance of the ballots. So if there is any discussion that anyone wanted to occur, that is the action that is on for council to take, so.
They could ask questions now?
Correct.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
The question is, is there any traffic study in that area? I see 57 unit, which translate to approximately, I would say, 100-plus people. So, and if I understand correctly, Main Street is only one, one lane on each direction. So if, would that, that project, would that contribute to a, some traffic issues?
Yeah, during the entitlement phase of the project, there was an environmental assessment that included a traffic aspect, a traffic impact aspect of it. And it was determined that the, the area was able to accommodate the future traffic in the area as part of this development.
So there is a traffic study. Can you show us the traffic study?
At this time, I can't, but I can definitely show that to you later on.
Yes, I want to verify that.
Yes, I can do that for you.
Thank you, councilmember Lam. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment? Any other councilmembers that like to make a comment on this item? Okay. So now, we would, I guess I need a motion and a second. We have a councilmember Chua. So move, I need a second. And we have Vice Mayor Barbado has made the second. So now, we'll call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Barbado?
Aye.
Councilmember Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Lam? Councilmember Leanne?
Aye.
Mayor Montano?
And I am an aye. Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you.
So this concludes the proceedings of annexation number 25 to Community Facilities District number 2005-1. And so now, moving on to the community development. Item 17, city manager?
Thank you, mayor. The next item is a presentation from our planning department and our planning director, Jay Lee. He will be joined by our economic development director, Alex Andrade, at the end of the presentation. The consultants and the planning team have been working for several months, a couple of years, on the Milpita's Gateway Main Street specific plan. Of course, this is the update to the city's existing Milpita's Midtown, Milpita's Midtown specific plan. And the, the plan is nearing completion. This will be one last check-in, sort of a status report from our planning director on the plan. And then, we do, as you'll hear in the presentation, we do expect to have this come back to the council sometime in the spring for adoption. But before we did that, we wanted to, to give you an update on all of the work that's been done since the last time that we met with you, several months ago. So I'll turn the time over to our planning director, Jay Lee, for the presentation.
Good evening, councilmembers. Happy New Year. Glad to be back here and especially excited to be able to present an update on this really important project, the Gateway Main Street specific plan. Thank you, city manager, Thomas, for that introduction. The last time we came to the council, I think, was in 2023, April 2023, so it was a while ago. But we did a lot of, we have done a lot of work since then. At that time, we presented a lot of information about the outreach that was done, the vision that came out of that outreach, and some of the early strategies that we had in mind. But we are very close to having a public draft of the plan, which we hope to release very soon. And after that, we can, during the presentation, we'll go over the next steps and what's left of the project. But we thought this would be a great time to give an update on where we're at, all the work that was done, and go over some aspects of the plan and to hear, hear some of your thoughts on all of that. So, next slide, please. And for the bulk of the presentation, I will, our consultant, Christine Babla, is here from Ascent Environmental. She's joined virtually, and she can, she'll deliver much of the content. And then, I'll be back up here to share a little more. And then, we'll be passing it off to Economic Development Director, Alex Andrade, for some more current efforts that are going on. Christine, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. Good evening and Happy New Year to the mayor and city council. I am Christine Babla. I am the principal for urban design and planning at Ascent. I've been the project manager, leading the consultant team for the Gateway Main Street specific plan. So as Mr. Lee said, we will be providing a briefing this evening on the project. This is an overview here of the process and timeline since we last briefed you. We are in Phase Four, where that orange arrow is, in the draft plan and EIR stage. We have been working very hard to prepare an admin draft plan. And we went through extensive coordination with city departments, members of the technical advisory committee, including DTA, to receive and address comments and do continued work related to the infrastructure analysis and the traffic study. So as Mr. Lee said, we are very close to having a public review draft document, a plan, and an admin draft EIR as well. So, that, go to the next slide, please. This is an overview of the plan area, which I know you are all familiar with. Just to refresh your memory, the plan area is the yellow gold area shown on the screen. It is generally located between the Great Mall Parkway and Calaveras Boulevard with 880 to the west. eight eighty to the west and the Bart Tracks to the east. The area is approximately six hundred and five acres. And throughout the process, we have focused really on a series of focus areas identified here, which I'll talk more about in a moment. Next slide. This is the vision that was established through the process, working with the city and the community. The Gateway Main Street specific plan area is envisioned as a vibrant center for Milpitas, where there are attractive neighborhoods and distinctive shopping streets, providing a gathering place really at the heart of the community. So some of the key principles are centered around creating a vibrant center, a downtown mixed-use destination, a walkable, bikeable, transit-accessible community, and also incorporating diverse and meaningful public open spaces throughout. Next, I'll provide an overview of the specific planned contents. These specific plan requirements are regulated by state law. And this specific plan addresses recent changes in legislation related to housing law, zoning, and objective design standards. So it was quite a detailed process. The document is organized with eight chapters, including an introduction, a vision, the land use and zoning, the objective design standards, mobility, public realm, infrastructure and public services, and finally administration and implementation. And shown at the right of the screen are excerpts from the draft document as it stands today. As mentioned earlier, the specific plan focuses on a series of four focus areas. Those are shown in the reddish, the light red color, one through four, with an emphasis on the Main Street district at number one. Two is the Crossroads District, which is the area around the historic center of downtown Milpitas at the intersection of Main Street and Sarah, including also the Sarah Center. And then three is the Gateway District, just to the west of the crossroads and east of the eight eighty freeway. And then finally, the Abbott District, which is the frontage along the freeway at number four. There are two other districts, the north of Calaveras Boulevard, that's the Library District, and the Creekside Industrial District. And then at seven, eight, and nine, those are a series of three urban reserve areas shown in the hatch. That includes the North Rail Yards, the South Rail Yards, and the Elmwood District. These are considered the city's very long-term growth areas, so the plan does not make any changes to the urban reserve areas, but rather establishes policies for future changes if redevelopment is later desired at some point. And then importantly, I just want to mention there are two existing neighborhoods in the plan area. That is the west of Abel Neighborhood at number ten and the Curtis Neighborhood at number eleven at the south area of the, of the plan area. These are considered areas of preservation and no changes to land use or zoning are proposed in those areas. And next, this is a diagram illustrating the eight big moves that the specific plan is built around. Starting with, again, Main Street, redesigning Main Street as a shared street and a pedestrian-oriented center. Number two is redeveloping the Sarah Center at, and the crossroads really as a new center for the community. Number three is prioritizing active building frontages along both Main Street and Sarah Way. And that's shown in the peach-colored lines as well as the, the red edges. Those are denoting areas of retail focus along Sarah and Main Street. And then item four is enhancing Calaveras Boulevard and Abel Street as multimodal street corridors. Number five is creating a connected network of new streets, paseos, alleys, and bike linkages. Those are shown in the green dash lines, really creating a new network of connections. Number six is developing a connected open space network with new urban parks and plazas. Those are the pink asterisks that you see throughout the diagrams, such as Crossroads Square at the end of Sarah Way, Carlos Street Plaza, and a new open space at Sarah Center. Let's see, number seven is integrating streetscape branding and public art at plan area gateways, activity streets, and public spaces. Those are the dash circles you see along Calaveras Boulevard and at the north part of Main Street. And then finally, supporting district solutions. This includes shared parking, mobility hubs, and coordinated infrastructure improvements to ensure the success of, of the moves that we've talked about here. I have a series of visualizations that I'll share showing some highlights from the plan. This is again about the focus on Main Street. At the left, you see Main Street today, north of Junipero. And at the right, a conceptual vision for future conditions along Main Street. This is intended to highlight really how we envision activating the street with streetscape improvements and branding improvements, on-street parking and mobility improvements, outdoor dinings and dining and parklets, and then active frontages throughout as well as landscape improvements and, and things like shading and, and lighting. This next slide shows Main Street, south of Junipero, again, looking north. On the left, you see the existing conditions today and on the right, the conceptual vision. This area of Main Street is really envisioned as more of a mixed-use and residential focus. So it'd be a combination of mixed-use ground floors with retail shops and storefronts, outdoor seating, and then residential infill with stoops and patios, really activating the street. And then finally, this illustration shows Calaveras Gateway. At the left, Calaveras Boulevard today, just west of the Abel and Sarah Way intersection. And at the right, you see what is envisioned. It's really creating a new place, anchoring that gateway into the Main Street and Crossroads area. So we really heard an interest in creating a vibrant, high-density center. So you see larger buildings anchoring the corner, again, streetscape branding improvements, new mixed-use with ground floor storefronts activating Sarah Way. And then here, there's a big focus on creating a gateway plaza, a sense of entry, signage, public art, places to be really, place-making at this key intersection. And then Sarah Center is a wonderful redevelopment opportunity for the city. We've studied this area and talked with stakeholders about the vision for this area. The specific plan includes two options for Sarah Center, so there is some flexibility in terms of implementation. The option at the left is a concept that is built around a central spine of park blocks. So really a center, a central park focus with active uses and gardens. It's envisioned to have mixed-use residential buildings oriented to the open space with active ground floors and retail corners. And then behind, you will see townhomes and row homes located at the south of Sarah Center, and this really would serve as a transition, a sensitive transition, scaling down to the adjacent existing single-family residential. And then at the right is another option showing redevelopment that's more of a mixed-use retail and entertainment core. This concept shows development oriented around a central park, which is that green at the center. Again, building entries, focus around and in front of the park, a focus on retail corners, really activating the edges of the park. And then again, with this concept, we're showing townhomes and row homes located to the south as, again, as a transition to the existing single-family residential. So once the specific plan is adopted, it will function as the zoning for the area. So there will not be a need for a subsequent zoning update to implement the specific plan. So as such, the specific plan includes a chapter on land use and zoning and a series of new mixed-use zones. So each of the focus areas, as well as the area north of Calaveras, would have a new mixed-use implementing zoning district with land uses and standards and criteria, a focus around implementing the vision for each of those areas. So there is one for Main Street, Crossroads, Gateway, Library, and Abbott. And then number six is the urban reserve overlay zone that would be subject to future This is a summary of key zoning and development standards that are included in the specific plan. Generally speaking, the maximum building heights are set at five stories through much of the plan area, with increased height up to about seven stories in the crossroads, including at Sarah Center, where, which is the area where the highest density and intensity is envisioned. The specific plan establishes minimum densities for conformance with the housing elements as well as maximum densities and regulates through a combination of density, floor area ratio, building height, and number of stories. There are also minimum ground floor heights that are established for key areas in order to ensure the development of quality retail and ground floor mixed-use spaces. Next. Along with the development standards, there is a community benefits program with eight different incentives. This allows for an increase in density and intensity in exchange for community benefits such as green roofs, economic incentives such as business retention and retail-ready ground floors. There is a tool for lot consolidation for some select areas, as well as options for providing district public parking, open space, or affordable housing. The specific plan includes a comprehensive chapter on mobility, including a mobility framework that addresses multimodal improvements, the creation of new streets and public parking, among a number of other items. This is an area that the team has coordinated on extensively to ensure that the development is implementable through the cross-sections, including for Main Street. So this is an example of the Main Street cross-section that is included in the plan. This is the cross-section for north of Junipero. And again, Main Street is planned as a pedestrian-friendly street, so this cross-section shows that there is some flexibility in terms of implementation. And this will be implemented in part through the sense of place plan. So this gives, provides a direction for that project and provides criteria for a number of improvements such as upgraded landscaping, lighting, banners, expanded sidewalks, curb extensions, as well as a flex zone to allow for a mix of parking and parklets that you saw in the earlier visualization. And then the next cross-section shows the area south, along Main Street, south of Junipero. And this is that area that, again, we showed earlier. This is really a mixed-use residential focus with a mix of retail storefronts and residential stoops activating the street. So this shows the criteria for the streetscape in this area, which shows a little bit of, more of an enhanced step-back area for the residential areas. And then this is the last cross-section, I believe this is for Sarah Way. This is designed with a central median and enhanced sidewalks, bike lanes, upgraded lighting and landscaping. And along Sarah, there's also a zone for bus-boarding islands and pedestrian amenities, so really an upgraded focus along Sarah, which is part of the gateway to Main Street. I will end here and turn it back to Planning Director Lee, who will speak about implementation and next steps in the review process. Thank you.
All right, and for the plan, we really wanted to make it implementable and feasible because we want to see things happen here, which we've heard from the council and from the community. Also, there was a big focus on implementation. Every specific plan has an implementation chapter, but we did a lot of analysis to make sure that our zoning standards are, are feasible, given the market. And we just want to, you know, encourage and facilitate the type of redevelopment that the community wants to see here. For, so I'll just go through the implementation priorities real quickly. Of course, one of them is to have a new marketing and branding strategy and a redesign of Main Street as a pedestrian-focused street. The Main Street Sense of Place Plan, which I believe the contract has been approved by the council and we started that project recently, will create a detailed streetscape plan for Main Street, which is the best way to implement that, along with an impact fee as development occurs, which we can collect and then use to improve Main Street. Also to address localized flooding and infrastructure improvements on Main Street in conjunction with the Main Street Sense of Place Plan improvements. The flooding and stormwater utilities is a little bit of a challenge on Main Street, so that's definitely going to be a big effort. And then also to assemble a SPAR fund to strategically acquire land to facilitate redevelopment in the Crossroads District, prioritizing retail shop fronts along Sarah Way and Main Street. Also establishing a parking district and improve shared parking opportunities to help facilitate pedestrian-oriented mixed-use and infill development. We understand as more development comes in here that the parking challenge will become greater, and we believe that not only focusing on the parking supply, but also the way that parking is managed will be really important. And also focusing on different ways of traveling through the area so that people don't need to depend on cars to get here exclusively. And then number five, implement, as I mentioned, vehicular, bike, and pedestrian mobility improvements with future redevelopment to support a walkable district. So we really want to have a holistic implementation plan. Okay? And I'll briefly go over the next steps as well. So as I mentioned, this effort was informed by outreach, which will continue. We do expect to have the public draft plan later this month. So we do, we will release that to the public and make sure that there's ample opportunity to provide feedback. There will be a thirty-day process for the public to provide feedback. And also, we've been working on the environmental analysis, which is required for this project. The subsequent EIR will also be released to the public for forty-five days. So there will be a robust public comment period. We will consolidate those comments also with feedback from the council and then adjust the plan as needed. And then hopefully come back in May or June of this year to conduct the public hearings. So we are, we're getting closer. Okay, and next slide, please. So there were gonna, I think there were gonna be a few extra slides that our director of economic development was going to go over. If it's not in this presentation, it should also be in the Teams folder as a separate Because I know that the, the focus of this plan is very long-term. Some of these changes will take time to go into effect, but we also want to share about the things that we are doing now, that the city is doing now to, it's kind of a chicken and egg situation where you want to make, you want to do things now to help, you know, long-term plans, but also seeing a long-term plan might, you know, encourage more current activity. So yeah, once the slides are up, hopefully Alex can go through them.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, city council. For the record, my name is Alex Andrade.
For the record, my name is Alex Andrade, Director of Economic Development and Strategic Initiatives. Always a pleasure to be in front of you today. And as Jay indicated, my role here today is to just give you a sense of what's happening on Main Street today. You just heard about this fantastic long range planning effort that's really going to revitalize Main Street and the surrounding areas. So again, my role is to just provide you an update and touch on various Main Street revitalization efforts that include the Downtown Business Association, the storefront improvement grant program, some development opportunities along Main Street and a potential of a downtown event focused on place making and activation. So as you see in front of you here, this is related to the Downtown Business Association and I'm really pleased to say that the efforts to reestablish the Downtown Business Association are actually going much better than expected. We used to have a Downtown Business Association and it's essentially been dormant for over 10 years. And we have built from our process, working with Mayor Montano, what was a, an effort to bring in a business improvement district, a property based business improvement district. Unfortunately, that was not successful, but what was successful is the building of relationships and trust with both the property owners and businesses. So that second bullet point here, I think is really important. Well, actually, the first bullet point upstairs on the screen is really important because it's the business owners themselves that are leading the reestablishment in partnership with the Office of Economic Development for this Downtown Business Association. So we're focused on enhancing the downtown and supporting the business and its community needs. Just to kind of give you a sense more about Downtown Business Associations, they're generally a nonprofit that's formed by businesses themselves focused on promoting the economic well-being of a commercial district. And there are many benefits to these businesses such as collective marketing, advocacy, community initiatives to attract both visitors as well as customers to local shops and restaurants. And one thing that I think is really important for the business community is to have a united voice for them to address various issues. One thing, several things that we're noticing in terms of concerns is wanting to make sure that there's more vibrancy in our downtown and Main Street. There are concerns about security, homelessness, and of course, the permit process and various other issues that are coming into our conversations. But I do want to say that we're, we're very fortunate to, as we move forward in the establishment of the Downtown Business Association, our business owners and property owners are stepping up. So I'm proud to say that our pre-Chadri has been voted in to be the President of the Downtown Business Association. There's interest for other board officers that would take on the Vice President, Officer role, a Secretary and Treasurer. And also just to kind of close this slide here, for the last few months, the Office of Economic Development, as well as our consultant through strategic, or rather, oh gosh, the name of the consultant is escaping me right now. But I will, I will come back to them. Anyway, for the last few months, we have been out on Main Street and Abel Streets and we have connected with 100 businesses, over 100 businesses, actually. It's been 108 businesses and it's been really successful. We're learning more about their particular needs and we're taking the information and moving things forward. Community Strong Strategies is the name of the consultant. So next slide, please. This next slide has to do with our storefront improvement grant program. The storefront improvement grant program does fall into our economic development strategy. It's one of our implementation actions under Strategy Nine, which states to provide storefront improvement assistance and enhance attractiveness and appearance of business exteriors. And we're actually doing that. So a storefront improvement grant program benefits the community by enhancing the visual appeal of buildings, boosting property values, attracting new businesses and customers, stimulates the local, stimulates local investment, branding, and improving the overall aesthetic of commercial districts such as historic districts, for example. So neighborhood character preservation is really important for our storefront improvement grant program. I won't get into the different levels, but we have two different types of grants. You have the information in terms of the dollar amount and the types of improvements under Tier One, Level One, Level Two. And the funding comes from the former American Rescue Act, American Rescue Plan Act, so ARPA funding. And aside from grants for improvements of facades and storefronts, there's also $75,000 that's been allocated specifically for design services. We're trying to help the applicants move through the permit process much swifter. We're fortunate enough to have received thus far six applications. And on the next slide, those are of course, the business addresses. But on the next slide, you'll see two examples of the six applications. We have one business or one location, if you can go back to that, yes, right here. So what you have in front of you here are before and after photos. So the, the one on top, the address is 408 to 114. There is a dentist business there as well as a massage business known as Footlax. And so you see on the left-hand side, on the before side, what that building facade used to look like. On the right-hand side, you could see a cleaner, fresher look in terms of new paint as well as enhancements to the landscape. And then down at the bottom of this slide, this happens to be located at 82 North Main Street. You have your before photo on the left-hand side and then the after photo. On the right-hand side, you see it's now a two-tone color. They've done away with the awnings. There's various other improvements that include window treatments and signage. This project itself is not complete, but it's getting really close. And actually, the good thing about this project is that it's part of future development on that North Main Street site. So next slide, please. So speaking of North Main Street and development opportunities, you see that same building, but I wanted to make sure that you saw to the north of this building is that vacant lot just south of the library. And on the left-hand side of the screen, you see the proposed three-story building, where it'd be ground floor retail as well as two levels of residential development. And so that, that conceptual plan on the left-hand side would be located where the vacant lot is. And then on the right-hand side, although it's very difficult to see because of that tree, is of course, the Quincy's Barbecue site. And the Planning Department, Economic Development and others have been working closely with the property owners. For some time now, we hope that they formally apply for development application soon. There's also, and it's not on the slide, but there's also interest by Junction Corporation. They own three parcels that make up about three and a half, four acres at the intersection of Sarah Way and Main Street. And so there's a potential for mixed use there, ground floor retail, three to four, maybe five stories above, based on the specific plan. We're having conversations with a residential developer that's interested in partnering with the city at a vacant lot at the corner of Carlo and South Main Street, on the other side of the co-location facility there on Abel. And we're having conversations about the potential of the city being a partner through the use of an easement that the city, or a portion of the city that's owned on Carlo, and it could be a part of this development that would result in eight townhomes with live, work, townhome opportunities. Next slide, please. So this is my last slide and I just wanted to leave you with an opportunity here for us. We've been talking a lot and you've heard the consultant, Ms. Babla, as well as Jay, talk about place making opportunities. And one thing that we're very focused on, based on our economic development strategy, which as well as the General Plan 2040, Action ED 3F, which indicates that we're intended to encourage new development on Main Street that creates a sense of place through art, culture, food, beverages, open spaces. So we're having conversations with various event facilitators about proceeding with a night market or really more focused on downtown place making and activation. So place making, creating an environment that's lively, family oriented, that attracts people to the downtown. They come, they stay, they're part of our community. And then activation, where we work with new and pop-up retail and just create events for the public realm. And the creative place making integrates what you see there, events, entertainment, family activities, local vendors and working with a variety of food vendors. So we do have a proposal from a event facilitator that's interested in partnering with the city. If you're interested, we can provide you more information. For now, that is my update on things that are happening along Main Street. I think too, the Vice Mayor has been, or the Mayor, Mayor Montano has been interested in talking further about creating a entertainment zone as well. If, if Mayor, you want to bring that up at some point, but that's, that's what I have for this evening. If you have any questions for Jay or our consultant or myself, we're happy to address them.
Thank you to the first presenter, Christine and also Jay and Alex. Does anyone have any questions? Well, actually, let me, I have to go to the public first. So anyone have any comments from the public and then I'll go to the city council?
I have no public speaker cards, Mayor.
Is there anyone? So we have Montemayor, come on up.
Thank you, Voltaire Montemayor Melpitas. I dwell in that place, the subject place. So with, I believe, the Vice Mayor, he has an office at Kearney, so that's Main Street, Sierra. And I'm anxious, I only want one, two good moves and we will revitalize Main Street, Abel, although Sierra and north of Honapero. So I'm excited also. So thanks for the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montemayor. So you know, can you, do you have a map where Junipero is, Alex or Jay? Because when you mentioned about Junipero Street, I didn't, I just couldn't, I don't know where it's at. It's, it's, do you have a map? Could you just kind of get a, so the audience can also know where that's at? Because that was brought up extensively, Junipero and Main Street.
Maybe one of the slides that show a little more, we could point it out on the map.
Yeah, I'll just point out that particular street doesn't go all the way through to Main Street, but it is the street that runs along the back of the Sarah Center. And then it, it runs along the back of the Sarah Center and then intersects with Abel at the Catholic Church. And then it, but it doesn't continue through the Catholic lot. So it's, it's kind of a.
Is that where the big lots used to be?
Behind there.
It's behind there. Oh.
That, that, yeah, the street that runs behind.
Junipero, is that where, where former Mayor Rich Tran lives in that area?
Generally in that area, yes.
Okay, I know where that's at. Right there, across the street from the St. John's Church. Okay. Oh yeah, that's the one.
Big Lots was here, runs here, Catholic, down at the Catholic Church. There is a vacant lot that runs through.
Yeah, that's, yeah, okay, I, I see. But that's good to have the map so that way people can see exactly where they're talking, what you're referring to. So again, public, any more comments from the public? No cards, right? Okay, so then I will bring it back to our council to have a discussion. Council members. We have Vice Mayor Barbara DiO.
Looking at the background, you know, the Midtown Specific Plan was adopted in 2002. And fast forward 19 years after, there's a little development as to that vision until a council in 2021 funded the, you know, the replanning or, you know, looking again at the Midtown Specific Plan. And four years thereafter, here we are, we have a beautiful plan. Very revitalized, very visionary and very enticing. So what I think, and this is for policy consideration, what can we do so that not another 21 years would pass? And at least we realize this beautiful plans and visions that we have with this new Melpitas Gateway Main Street Specific Plan. Can we put some, some checkpoints along time? To see, let's say every other two years, 21 years is too long. Every other two years, every other five years, you know, that there is a mandate that, you know, we monitor what's going on, what kinds of incentive programs or, or anything that we can do to make sure that this vision in the next 21 years beyond our, or, you know, beyond our time, you know, some, somewhere, somehow, whenever this will be realized.
That's a great question, Vice Mayor. So one part of the way I would answer the question is something we can do to hopefully realize the vision is to really have the right development framework in place, to have the right policies in place. So we really did a lot of analysis and to make, and modeling to make sure that whatever zoning we propose is actually possible. So we are confident with the range of densities, ranging from townhomes to four to five story products to even podium style, which right now the market is difficult for that product. But the flexibility, I think, will allow things to happen here. We also are utilizing incentive based zoning, so providing density bonuses and extra incentives, development incentives in exchange for community benefits. So hopefully the plan will have some teeth and help make things happen. Also, I think you bring up a great point about implementation and some sort of monitoring program in place to make sure that we revisit to see how it's working and then we can consider updates to the plan. So we have an implementation chapter and that is something that I've written down. We can definitely include something that says, you know, it, it can take different forms, but you know, requiring or encouraging the city to revisit, look at how much redevelopment has occurred and reconsider whether an update needs to happen to make adjustments where needed. So I think that's a great idea.
Is there part of the vision that, you know, we preserve at least this specific area limited to the maximum mixed work? You know, what my fear is, you know, with the onslaught of a residential building, you know, we have this very fantastic vision and you know, in five, eight years, revitalized, it's not producing any positive outlook or income, then you know, some property owners will come ask and change the zoning into purely residential. So what assurance we have that this will, this plan will be preserved in the next five, 10 years to come?
So in, in some areas of the plan, namely away from the core area, the crossroads area, which is where we envision the highest density, the most retail activity. In other areas, we are more flexible with having a fully residential, multifamily residential project, but we've designated retail activity corners, retail activity streets to ensure that we retain that retail and commercial aspect in important areas of the plan. So I do believe that will be effective in ensuring that much of the plan area, especially on the ground floor, will remain commercial in nature. And also we have a consultant here, Mrs. Babla, who can also speak to some of the details of the plan if desired.
Please, yeah, so regards to our consultant, I believe that there's bases, you know, on how this was developed. Was it also envisioned, I mean, does this plan cater to whatever changes later on in the years to come? In flux of people, you know, better investments and stuff like that? How would it react to these stimulus?
I can jump in and respond to those questions. I think you've brought up some excellent points. We have built in flexibility wherever possible so that the plan can respond to market conditions. The past plan was quite rigid with, in terms of both the land uses as well as the limitations on height and density. So we have worked very hard to calibrate the zoning to be more flexible So we have worked very hard to calibrate the zoning to be more flexible and also not to over require retail. If we over require retail, that can be a deterrent to development. But we do want to make sure that we are incentivizing retail in the right location so that we get the kind of vibrancy that we've talked about. In terms of checkpoints, I think periodically monitoring the plan. We have, you know, worked with other cities that do a yearly update to really review what's happened and then any changes to state law as well, just to make sure that the, the plan continues to be effective. I think looking at a cycle of perhaps two years could be helpful and making adjustments along the way if, if necessary.
So I agree with that checkpoints, at least, you know, some, some localities do it in a year, maybe two years, just to, to preserve what we have spent and envisioned today. So, so then the question is, so how do we put that in policies to make sure whether it's the next council, next, next generation of leaders, you know, they will also be reminded, hey, at some point in 2025, we did have this and now we're mandated to check and make sure that, you know, the vision goes forward. Is there something that we can write in any book, in any schedule or some policy, Mr. City Attorney? I don't know.
So I think as staff pointed out, when this plan eventually comes to the council for adoption, you could at that time require periodic reporting from staff, at which point of time staff would be directed by the council to continue to make those reports until the city council directed otherwise.
Right, so can we put that in any policy, you know, whether we are the one sitting now or next officials? What I'm trying to say is this vision is continuous, continuous, right? So no matter who the policymakers are, we're hoping that this vision that we have now will forever continue and, you know, revitalize Main Street.
We can put some level of detail in the implementation chapter. There, there will be a table that outlines the actions, the responsible, the responsible department or agency, and then also like a timeframe, so we can put all that in there.
Okay, just to make sure that our efforts today will be realized at some point. May I have a question for Economic Development Director, please? I, I just heard a downtown business association. You're trying to back to life a ten-year-old association. What happens to the Milpitas Chambers of Commerce?
Well, the Milpitas Chamber of Commerce is a separate legal entity. And there's an opportunity for the chamber to be a complementary organization. Because when you look at the downtown business association boundary, it's very similar to the, both the crossroads and the Main Street section. So there's four focus areas. So think of Weller Lane on the north side, Curtis down on the south side, on the east side of Main Street, and then Abel on the west. I just had a conversation with the chamber president yesterday about the possibility of them being a part of this effort. Because I have made the assumption that there's about 197 businesses located within that downtown business association. I have made the assumption that perhaps some of those businesses are also chamber members. So the chamber will take a look at their membership if they're located within that district and there's, it could be benefits there. But we've also discussed, we've had three business outreach efforts that the chamber would come and walk Main Street and Abel so that we show the partnership between the Office of Economic Development, the city and the chamber. So there, there are partnership opportunities. But I don't believe that the chamber then becomes a part of the downtown business association because that becomes its own nonprofit with their own bylaws and their own officers. But there can be a complement, complementary relationship there.
So DBA has been in existence?
There, there was, there was one in existence, but I think around 2016 or so, it disbanded.
And the city is trying to bind them together again?
We are.
Just use Milpitas Chambers. I, I don't, I don't know why we have to revive a disbanded organization when the purpose of that organization is to revitalize business sectors. That is just my thought, right?
Downtown business associations, a lot like business districts, are successful if they're led by both business and property owners. And that's a major difference here. So this isn't a membership organization where members have to pay in to be the, in the downtown business association. The chamber is a membership organization where their members have to pay to be a part of that. I do think that there could, there's interest. I don't know if the Chamber of Commerce has the, the resources, both human and financial resources, to take on what a downtown business association would do.
Does the neighboring cities have DBAs, San Jose?
Yes. San Jose, I believe, has several downtown business associations.
All right.
Yeah.
Sannevale, Santa Clara, so it's something that each and every city have, you know what I'm saying?
We can come back and give you more information as to which cities have downtown business associations. They're, they're popular. And since the pandemic, there's been a lot of interest by cities to revitalize downtowns. And yes, I, I'm gonna assume that chambers have been a part of those efforts.
What I'm saying is instead of starting brand new, you know, we continue what we have, enhance it, and we partner. That, that's just my thought. But if you believe, you know, in your capacity, that that's a good idea, well, hopefully you report soon. So how many membership do we have now with DBA?
The downtown business association has not formally filed. There, the next meeting, which is scheduled for January 22nd, will be about the conversation on deciding what type of nonprofit, do they become a C3 or a C6? And there's pros and cons between both of those. And then bylaws have to be discussed within the downtown business association. And it has to be a formal filing at the state. So at this point in time, there is no downtown business association, but there's a lot of momentum to reestablish it formally.
All right.
Ned wants to, City Manager?
Yeah, I was just going to add that certainly there is a connection and some overlap between a Chamber of Commerce and a downtown business association. The difference in my mind is a little bit of geography. The, the Chamber of Commerce, of course, has interest citywide in, in developing businesses. And as Director Andrade said, it is a membership driven organization, whereas the downtown business association is hyper focused on the needs and the, the particular needs, even the unique needs of a, of a particular area, in this case, Main Street and along, well, yeah, mostly along Main Street. So it's a much smaller area and they are looking at what can we do in our particular area to support our businesses as existing businesses as well as growing new businesses in that area, I think. So just to draw a distinction, maybe you can say more about drawing distinction between the actual purpose of the chamber versus what the downtown business association does.
Yeah, City Manager Thomas is absolutely right. When it comes to Main Street revitalization, we have been very hyper focused in creating a central place where people can come and shop and dine and, and be, go to the library. Obviously, there's the medical health facility there, open space. And so kind of to your question earlier, Vice Mayor Barbara Dio, about paying attention and checkpoints, what we pay attention to grows and we really want to focus on bringing people to our downtown. Downtown's become the heartbeat of the community. And so the Office of Economic Development, we have four people in our small team and that is, has been a city council priority for some times, so we're very focused that, on that. The Chamber of Commerce does provide business resources and advocacy. And I think that's where there's a lot of inner overlap and complementary services between the Office of Economic, Office of Economic Development and the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce is working its way back to, I think, where they were several years ago. And they have some really good plans that I learned about just last week in terms of events and business resources and advocacy. And I mentioned to some of their board members just last week that I was both surprised but pleasantly surprised. And our business community is going to be much better for it as they continue down their, their goals.
Them and maybe a suggestion, call it then a Milpitas Downtown Business Association, you know, to carry a flagship.
We will continue our conversations with the chamber president and, and the board. There's actually a meeting this Thursday and we can have that conversation, a board, chamber board meeting on Thursday and we can have, start that conversation.
Right, no, what I'm saying is, you know, since you are reviving it, the downtown business association, maybe at least call it Milpitas Downtown Business Association.
I think that's going to be the formal name of the organization.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I thought it was the Main Street Merchants Association. That's what the last I heard. That was the, what Brian told me.
We've been using Milpitas Downtown Business Association.
Anyway.
But we can talk about the, the title.
Anyway, they're the ones, they're the ones that decide. Anyone else? So I, I had a few comments. So thank you, Christina. That was, those were really nice pictures, but the reality is, it's probably not going to happen for a very, very, very long time. I was on the, when I was on the planning commission, that was back in 1996. I think it was, what was it, 1992 or 98? But, so we did a, we did a street, a Main Street street skate plan. And it's already been 26 years, folks. So now I understand what Gary's saying. We really need to streamline this. We really, I mean, I, I don't know what, what does it take? And, and I really look, you know, because each and every one of these council members, they have a vision. They want to make Main Street a destination place. But there's, I don't know, what, what, what is the problem? Why, the problem is the money. We all know that. There's nothing going to happen without money. So even as I was looking at Christine's presentation and it had the FAR, even the FAR is too, is too, is too low. I mean, comparing to the, it should be a bigger FAR for the floor area ratio for the businesses. Because nobody's going to want to open a business if you have, if the FAR is too low. So my recommendation, it needs to be increased. Businesses are not going to open up if the, if the space is, is so small that. And that's exactly what happened to that one, that, that one project right there across the street from St. John's Church. You have, they're all kind of squeezed in there. Have you been in their business? They're squeezed in there. It's, it's, it, it could have been designed better. So we really need to increase the FAR for those businesses. We need to streamline the permit process. We need to give them incentives because it's not going to happen if we don't do all those things. Like I said, it's already been 26 years and we keep, we keep coming back and nothing's happening. And, and even the business, some of those businesses from the, that are forming that business association, even they complain about, you know, that it's, that it's been, it's a revolving door. It's, it's, they're hearing that, oh, the whole, the impediments that the city puts upon some of the businesses. So we really need to, you know, I, I look to our city management team to really, to really, you know, Matt, Ned, all you guys to really put the vision of the city council as a priority. This is, okay, here's another one. We, we've already, you're going to have a community forum, not forum, a survey on Main Street, but we've already done that. We've, so what happened to those results? Do they just get put on a shelf? And then all these surveys cost money. So it's like we're going around and around and around and we're not, that's why I agree with Vice Mayor Barbara Dio. It's like, we need some timelines. We need some measurable benchmarks is what we need. And I just really, because I know each and every one of these council members, they really want Main Street to move forward. And that's, that's just Main Street, but you know, the other part like where the big lots, the Abel and Abbott, those are all. But, but we're focusing more on the three blocks of Main Street, the historical part. And yeah, so we're, I'm, I'm hoping that that Merchants Association gets going on that. And my question is, who's going to pay for the, for it to become a nonprofit? Is it the city or is it them?
Funding for the downtown business association can come from various sources. It could be grants. In some instances, cities do assist downtown business associations. They can have sponsorships for events. If they were to focus on trying to obtain grants, then incorporating under a C3 nonprofit would be more beneficial than a C6.
Who's going to help them, the C us or they have to do it on their own?
So the Office of Economic Development needs to have conversations with their city attorney's office. There have been instances of, in other cities, where they put some seed funding into assisting with like, it costs a few thousand dollars at the state to submit the formal documentation to become a nonprofit. So things of that nature could help. But if successful, the way they can, the downtown business association can be funded is if we are able to move into a business improvement district. And likely because we've already tried the property based business improvement district, this particular one could move into a business base bid, business improvement district.
Right, and then that would be the, where the impact fees will come in.
That's right. They would, the business that themselves are assessed on an annual basis.
The other thing is, I, I really would like to see, because we, I'm sure we all do, we want to, because we want foot traffic there. We want it to be an entertainment zone at three blocks because that's the whole purpose of food trucks and getting people moving. And so I'd like to see some research done on that. And I don't know if I put it in now, might I request now or when we do our, at the end of the meeting?
Yes, and just to get clarity there, your request for information would be on funding for the downtown business association?
Entertainment zone, making that.
Or the entertainment zone.
Yeah, to make it an entertainment zone. Because when you do, make it an entertainment zone, you get, you can do a lot more, from my understanding, right? In, in terms of, you know, place making, events, bringing people to downtown, yes. So, and I, and I brought this up two years ago. I think the city of Modesto did it. So, I mean, we, we need.
So Mayor, if I might add, this plan is at heart, as you saw, a zoning and land use plan. So that would set the, would essentially be the foundation or set the table for that type of additional planning for an entertainment zone. It would build upon the land use plan.
Okay, so if you could put that language in there for entertainment zone, that'd be great. Okay, so we don't want to stay here all night, since I know we're gonna, we have some items. We have a council member, Chua, has a question or a comment.
A comment. Thank you, Mayor. Just piggybacking on the feedback from Mayor and Vice Mayor. And I know the frustration, this is, we'll talk about this forever. So my suggestion is when you do the goals, break it down. You know, short term, medium, and then long term. If you, I look at it as tactical and strategic, but break it down some more into different like, you know, zero to three years, three years to five years, five years to 10 years. So it's not so overwhelming that we want to do the whole 20 years in one year. So at least we know if we're hitting the target. So that's my recommendation. Thank you, Mayor.
That's great. Thank you. Anyone else have any more comments? If not, this is just for information only, so there's no action on that. So now we're going to be moving on to Leadership and Support Services, item 18, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is a resolution appointing a former employee to work, to continue working at the city as a retired annuitant, as it's referred to under CalPERS. She would be working as a part-time extra-help senior administrative analyst. Typically, this type of action would not come to the council as its administrative. However, under state law, because the person that would be coming back is retired, state law requires the council action on this item. It is at heart a, an employee issue, so we have our HR Director Kelly Parmley here to answer any questions. Our fire chief, because this would be in the Fire Department, our fire chief is also available online to, or is he here to, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, you're here in person, excuse me, Jason, to answer any questions that you might have about what this person would be doing in the Fire Department. Kelly?
I don't, good evening, Mayor, Council, Vice Mayor. I don't have much to add, other than this is just seeking your approval to waive the 180-day waiting period that we would normally have. That would be six months. And so the chief is here if you have any questions about the urgency of this, but it is to allow them to move forward with bringing her back to meet some critical needs under a shorter timeframe. Any questions for?
Okay, we have a council member, Chua.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Jason, hello. Hi Kelly. Hi Director Kelly. How long has she worked for us?
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff. Happy New Year. Jason Skunor, your fire chief. And to answer your question, council member, the previous senior administrative analyst served with the Fire Department for about nine years.
How long have you known that she's retiring?
We were made aware that she was going to retire approximately three months before she retired, so it would have been about July of '24, with her desired retirement date of October of '24.
Did you make any preparations, since you know for many, many months that she's retiring? Any preparation at all for the event to cover her? What preparation did you do to make sure that the, like you said here, critical and historical experience has to be, have to be covered? Did you, what did you do?
So, good question. So when we were made aware of her desire to retire, we sat down with Natalie, and we had her, you know, put together as much information into a folder, basically an electronic folder, that would be available to not only our current staff, but the, you know, her future successor. The key component that we were missing was the ability to actually have the new senior analyst have the ability to meet with her one-on-one and, you know, conduct a transfer of knowledge. Unfortunately, we didn't have the ability to have her position filled until she actually physically retired and departed the city. So, you know, in a perfect world, we would have the opportunity for over-strength for a month or two, so they could work one-on-one. But unfortunately, that wasn't, you know, that wasn't a process that was available to us.
When did you hire the replacement?
So Natalie retired October 1st. Replacement started October 2nd.
Last year.
Correct.
And October, November, December, now it's January, and the new person is not trained?
We're fortunate. Our new senior analyst has, has done a tremendous job. She has the knowledge, skills, and abilities to be very successful in the position. Our ask here tonight is just to provide her with, you know, what would just be, you know, the best opportunity to be most successful by having the ability to work one-on-one with the previous senior administrative analyst, to really focus on more public safety-centric items that the previous, or excuse me, that the new analyst hasn't had the ability to be exposed to. Examples would be like working with the state on our CalOES reimbursements from our wildland deployments, ambulance billing, and then being intimately familiar with the, you know, various data platforms we use to collect, analyze data, which, you know, ultimately makes us more operational.
I don't want to get into the technical, but I'm looking at the process of the transfer of knowledge, and I question that because October, I mean, you said there was a folder. I would think that in the folder, there should be a process, a documented process on how her job has to be done. And this should have been transferred to the new person within this last four and a half months, and it wasn't done. See, I don't like this. I don't like this hiring retired employees because we didn't prepare for it. Really, this is one of the policies that I don't like.
Well, I would, so I would say that we've done our best to prepare her, and if we didn't have the ability to bring the previous analyst back, she'll still be successful. But in my role as fire chief, I'm always looking at any ways we could be more efficient and to give all of our staff members, you know, the ability to be the most successful. And so, you know, if this was not approved, I think our new senior analyst will be, you know, fine, and she'll learn her job over time. But I think that the ability to have her interact with the previous analyst just makes her more successful with the onboarding process. It'll be quicker.
I'm not in favor of this, just to let you know. Thank you. Thank you both. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Chua. Anyone else have any more comments on this? We have Councilmember, I mean Vice Mayor, Barbara Deal.
Will there be an alternative, like training, sending this new person to additional, whatever, to prepare her for her or him to the new position? As an alternative to being shadowed by a former senior analyst?
We have additional mechanisms to help, you know, complete the onboarding process. We just, you know, the Fire Department assessed that the most value for her and the quickest manner in which for her to be familiar with the public safety side of being a senior analyst was the ability to work one-on-one with the person who's held that position for almost a decade and set up all the processes that we currently utilize.
Well, it's just for policy consideration thoughts, right? To my memory, the only employee that I remember that, you know, the council has approved for purposes of coming back as a retiree for this role is the city manager before. If you recollect, I think the. Finance director, yeah. Right. So what I'm saying is, you know, we use and have this as, to me, as a very needed manpower, as, you know, I mean, very critical, right? And for policy consideration, I keep on repeating that, not to undermine any position, is we use it in a way that it was purposely legislated for. So really, the question is, and again, and for future situations like this, you know, if, you know, somebody has ceased employment with us, and, you know, we haven't had a plan, an escape plan, or, you know, for a transition, then we may need to rethink the process again. Secondly, this is a part-time position, and I understand that there's only a few hundreds of hours yearly that this, if this is granted by the council. The question is, have we determined that the limitation of time of this possible employee to come back would be efficient, would serve the purpose of, you know, what we are asking for, to train the new staff, or, or what, what's convincing, right? We were under this rule, limited time, part-time, I said part-time, and I assume that the responsibility for a senior analyst is full-time. So would it be efficient to us to do this? Or in the alternative, would it be more efficient to have, you know, four months invested to the new person, again, not specifically invest, or, and send her to, her or him to any schooling or training, so she or she can serve for a long time? So I'm just looking for alternatives other than, you know, this.
I'll just respond quickly and let the chief respond as well. Those are all good questions. Thank you for them. My observation in just a year, I think tomorrow will be a year here with the city of Milpitas. Woohoo, yeah, is that this organization is about as lean as I have experienced, and I've been many places, and I have seen folks be very thoughtful about the transition. We don't have a lot of opportunities to get specific training on things that are complex and very specific in this particular area around fire and fire operations, right? So we can hire a general senior manager. They've made a great hire, by the way. She's awesome. I've met her. To try to support her and accelerate her success now in a different cycle of, of the full fiscal year, I think is an opportunity that the chief is just asking for. I have seen retired annuitants be used in my year quite effectively to support folks to be successful. It's just that the CalPERS is so restrictive about how you can talk to folks when they're in the retirement phase, that there isn't that crossover between person to person, and it's not training that you can just go grab from somewhere else and be able to bring the new person up to speed. So I'm just here to say that we're just asking to waive the 180 timeframe. And I think that Jason is advocating for the success of his person and using that as a resource, and I fully appreciate why that wouldn't be supported or would not be a strategy you all would buy into. It certainly is one that I see is working here at the city of Milpitas in my ear.
Is there a contractual time if we rehire this person back?
So my understanding is that you all are creating a limited timeframe in which she would return from, limited already by the hours for somebody who's hired back part-time, retired annuitant. But my understanding is that there's a commitment to having this be a limited timeframe in terms of how long she'll be hired back. Is that correct, Chief?
That is correct. So the overall objective was really, this is not meant to be open-ended. If it was approved by council, our intent would be to utilize, you know, Natalie's services to help complete the onboarding process, and we'd be completed by the end of the fiscal year. So we're looking at about five months, and we also don't know how often we would need her. We might only need her four to six hours a week. We might need her 20 hours in a different week. So really, it's just going to be, you know, you know, we'll see how quickly she can share that information with our new analyst, and then, you know, potentially, we might not even need her for the full duration. Might only be a few months. We don't know that right now. We just wanted to, you know, at this point, we identified the end of the fiscal year as being, you know, a good stop point, but we could stop sooner.
So if ever this employee exceeds the limitation of CalPERS, you will come back again to the council?
No. No, this is simply to ask for the waive of the waiting period of the 180 days. So we couldn't go back and use this or require the, or ask of the services for this person for that 180-day waiting period. This is saying, can we waive that so that this person can come back now? Otherwise, we'd be waiting six months for this person.
I understand that. So what I'm saying is, we open it to this individual now, then she can be retained there forever.
With the limitations of the hours that CalPERS has, yes. We have retired annuitants that are sitting out there that we could bring back at any time.
Right, no, what I'm hearing is, you know, we're needing her expertise and assistance for the transition. What I'm hearing from the chief is, you know, we're looking at, you know, everything, her, his vision in regards to the transition and knowledge transfers within the five months.
Yeah.
I'm asking if, let's say, you know, it needed more than that, and she completes, you know, the limitation of CalPERS, the 900 hours, and then we still need, for whatever reason, we still need her, do you come back to the council again, or, you know, she gets continued to be hired on the discretion of the chief?
So the intent this evening was really not, at this point, we don't really envision her being here past the end of the fiscal year. You know, certainly, we can always use the additional help, but we're, we're very grateful for the resources we have in the Fire Department. And, you know, if, if this, tonight's initiative was successful, and the new senior analyst has the ability to acquire, you know, the critical historical knowledge that we're looking to transfer, I don't necessarily see a need to even entertain that. The only reason we would ever even consider it is if through, you know, conversations with the city manager's office, if we wanted to utilize her services for some type of long-term strategic planning, or, you know, some type of accreditation process, things that we don't necessarily have the resources internally to do that. But that's, that's not the, that's not the intent.
No, I asked that because, you know, we're hiring her at $73 an hour, about, almost $6,000 a month, and that would be sufficient for, let's say, an entry level, that's willing to be trained. I am not undermining your capacity as a hire or employer, but, you know, the policy of it, I'm saying, is it prudent for the city to spend a salary of a full-time employee, you know, rather than starting from, from, you know, from hiring a new one and spending money for the, for the long term, you know, of being employed? So that's the thought. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And now moving on to Councilmember Chua.
Let's, I'm not clear exactly. You said it, but it's not clear to me. You're asking for five months, but just to shadow, train the new person? There's got to be some deliverables that, that you can get at the end of this five months. And I'm looking for a documentation, how to get that done, if that's possible. There should be some, some, some end result of this. Like Kelly said, you know, it's, could be five years from now, and she's still there. We don't want to see that. So piggybacking on what, what Kelly, I mean, Director Kelly said, I really don't want to see this thing. It's really a question or a goal of each department to prepare for a retirement issue, something like this. But I would go with your recommendation, but I don't want to see this again. And there's got to be a limit, a limit and a deliverable.
So in terms of deliverables, you know, one of the, one of the goals of the Fire Department, through conversations with the city manager's office, has been to identify additional revenue streams that the Fire Department can capitalize on, that we haven't necessarily been able to do in the past, based on limited resources. A couple examples of that, where our previous senior analyst has been instrumental in developing those revenue streams, you know, two that come to mind, one is our CalOES reimbursements. I believe at the end of this year, or excuse me, end of 2024, the Fire Department brought in approximately $450,000 above and beyond net from our CalOES deployments that go back to the general fund. That was based on our 19 deployments, mutual aid deployments with the state. So, you know, Natalie was instrumental in putting together the process and spending the time to do that. That's a lot of money that we were able to bring back to the, and we're happy to bring that back to the city's general fund. Another revenue stream is our ambulance billing, which is fairly complex. She's kind of learned that process, along with some others of us, from the beginning. But she was really instrumental in understanding the different federal requirements and the complexities that come.
I understand that. I understand. I understand that. I understand the, I mean, you know, this revenue generation. That in mind, it should have been prepared for this. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Vice. Thank you, Councilmember Chua.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is there anyone else that would like to make any more comments? I think we have, uh, Councilmember Lamb. Hold on, hold on.
The visual who would, oh.
Got it? Okay.
Yeah, this individual who would retire, um, is this person receiving pension and retirement from the city?
Well, uh, where they're at financially, I don't know if they're collecting a pension yet.
I, yes, and I, I was going to do that, but I was expecting the fire chief was going to say that. We cannot talk about pension-related matters, um, or personal financial information, particularly with, uh, retirement accounts.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Lamb. And, uh, City Manager?
Yeah, uh, if it helps, um, Councilmember Chua, I appreciate your, your comments and your concerns. I would just offer that, um, as City Manager, I, I meet with the fire chief at least twice a month, if not more frequently. Um, we've had a number of conversations about this particular topic. I would be happy as we continue to, to meet over the months ahead, uh, to check in with him and then I can continue to inform the council members as to how this is going, uh, uh, in our one-on-one briefings. If that helps you to have some type of accountability for, over the next few months of how we're handling this particular situation and training the new employee.
Thank you. Um, so I, I want to piggyback on some of your comments. I think, you know, we are elected to make sure that we spend the public's monies in, in a, in a mindful way. Um, so I, and I don't know if I can ask this question, but the person that you hired, so needs to be trained by, should be, it needs to be trained by the senior administrative analyst. So, so you hired a senior administrative analyst, but she needs to be, uh, she needs to be trained by the senior, um, the one that retired. So the, and I don't know if I can ask this question, but usually when you hire somebody, you want somebody that already has that experience. So is it that that person didn't have that experience or is it because it's, you know, when you hire, you hire, you want to make sure that you're not, you, somebody, somebody's already prepared, right? So I swear, just a little bit confused on that.
So a great, great, great question and comment. So we had a great applicant pool. You know, to be clear, this, the senior analyst in public safety, and I, I think that police departments probably the same, uh, it's a unique position. There's not a lot of them out there. Um, we've only got one. And we hired, the person we hired has a strong background as an analyst, um, particularly in the budget realm, which has been very advantageous for us. But unless you've worked directly with a fire department, um, it's a very unique skill set. Ambulance billing is not something most people know how to do. Most fire departments, if they're fortunate, have one person that does that. CalOES reimbursement process is very complex and time-consuming. That's why they paid us $450,000, um, to pay for all the work that we do to support those deployments. And that takes a, uh, a well-trained senior analyst. Um, that's a very unique skill set. You know, tracking response times, call times, um, unless you've worked directly with a fire department, uh, which very few have, you're not going to have that skill set. Now, we can teach them that skill set over the time, but the reason we're here tonight is because we thought that we could teach them that quicker by having, uh, the person who's been doing it for a decade before they got there, um, to help onboard them. Um, so, so to answer your question, we had a great applicant pool. To the best of my knowledge, I don't believe any of them had any public safety experience, which is not uncommon. There are just not that many amount there and the ones that are out there usually don't leave unless they're retiring.
Thank you for that clarification. And this person will be there six months or five months?
So if approved, we're asking for up to five months till, until the end of the fiscal year. We may, again, you know, just to be clear, um, you know, we may not need them for their full duration. Might only need them for a couple of months.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have, uh, Councilmember Lamb.
Yes, uh, one more question. Uh, during this duration of five months, um, is there total amount, um, you allocated, um, so it will not exceed this amount?
Yes, Councilmember, great question. Um, we've already identified a funding mechanism within our current budget. So to be clear, we're not, we're not asking for any additional funding to support this, this request. So yes, we, we do, we've got the budget for it and we don't plan to exceed that. Does that answer your question?
Um, kind of like, um, this allocation of funds for this consulting person, have you allocate a absolute dollar amount, um, for how many hours? Sounds like some of the questions, um, the council asked earlier and, and your answers was like, um, it could be 20 hours, it could be a 10 hours at certain times. So sounds, sounds like it's a fluctuating number of hours. What I'm looking for is a fixed total of number of hours. So it cannot exceed that.
Good question. So have any, to be clear, to the best of my knowledge, the fire department, with the exception of maybe a couple intern fire chiefs in the past, has not brought back anybody in this fashion before. So we're very judicious on how we, you know, when we come to council and ask for things like this. My understanding is how this would work to make sure that they, um, that they weren't going over their allocated hours. As we work with finance and HR, they track their hours very carefully. We have multiple redundancies in place to make sure that they don't exceed their hours. You know, there is a degree of flexibility on, on behalf of the annuitant. So when I say that maybe four or six hours or, you know, one day and maybe 10 at different, it's really based on their, um, on their availability. But we would not exceed the, we're, we're very diligent to be ensure we're not going to exceed the CalPERS limitations. And we would track those, you know, first to the fire department and then I know that finance and HR would probably also track it just as a redundancy.
What I'm hearing, Chief, is an ask around, and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember Lamb, is that you've, in your budget, have probably set an estimated amount of money that you would have available in your budget to, to support this position, right? So if I were doing this, I would say, oh, I have a part-time salary savings or something, up to 30 hours a week. And I know that I can't spend more than 30 hours a week, uh, resource-wise. So I'm, I think what I'm hearing is like, how does that work? You, you're working within your budget and you won't exceed a certain amount.
So we've, we don't plan to exceed a total of 40, over $40,000, um, for the entire duration of, you know, her employment. That's the money that we identified that we had within our budget to work with. Hopefully we don't have to spend that entire 40,000, but that's what we identified that we have available within our current budget.
Okay, thank you very much. So I guess the overarching message is we just, that we're spending the public, public's money, but the funding is wisely and, and, uh, you gave some good arguments. So, uh, I'd like to, anybody have a motion here?
Um, Mayor, we still need public comment.
Oh, that's right. One more. Public comment, anybody from the public? Welcome, Mr. Montemayor.
Thank you. I'll just mention rewards, ice cream bullet. Is there a timely needed, um, as a part-time extra help? And then, uh, us part-time, it could be oriented by then, is the subject applicant or to be hired is potential of the job? And it could be a, a good interview for, for his, uh, he, he or she will be, Natalie, okay? And anyway, there, there may be a question of the process of selection. We have those experiences already. It differs all the time, I believe, I mean, sometimes. So, uh, um, the applicant or the subject fellow is hoping now probably and I, it's up to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montemayor. Um, the one thing I did want to mention, uh, Chief, is that, you know, sometimes they do cross-training. I don't know if you've heard, I know in the corp, in a private, in the private sector, they do a lot of cross-training so that way you don't have to, you know, hire somebody to, to train another person. So anyway, just, uh, just a thought. But, um, I guess if there's no more public comment, then any more council discussion? We have, uh, cons, we have, uh, Councilmember Chua.
Are you gonna say something?
I was gonna make a motion.
Oh, I was gonna do that.
And then after that, we'll be Councilmember Lynn and then after that, Councilmember Lamb.
Uh, I was gonna, I was gonna make the motion, but before I do that, I have a question on, on number two, on the recommendation.
Is that for, uh, the city manager, city attorney or?
See, for the city manager. So, uh, city, city manager on number two, approve and authorize city manager to execute employment agreement. Are we clear on what the direction of the council tonight, that it's gonna be five months, right?
Yes, correct. And then I'll also report back to the council and the individual briefings on how this, how we proceed.
Yeah, okay. So, so move.
I think, uh, Councilmember Lynn?
I was gonna make a motion, but, um, uh, Councilmember Chua made the, the motion, so I'm gonna second. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So, uh, we'll call for the vote then?
No.
Oh, Councilmember Lamb?
Comment.
Do you want a, one more last comment?
Um, one last comment. Um, is it possible for, um, for you guys to document the training? So from now on, oh, we, we don't have to do this or some kind of video or documentations? So we can record, uh, the training so other, um, other people can learn from this as well?
Great question. So, you know, we are building the redundancy in our, in our staff to make sure that we're not in a position, again, where we've got these single points of, of failure. And just to be candid, I'll, I'll call them that. Again, we've only got the one senior analyst, so historically it was difficult to have the redundancy, the number two, the number three person that could, you know, that could, um, assume the roles in it, like an acting role, and then to compile the documentation that you're speaking about in terms of making sure that it lives on when people retire. The previous senior, um, analyst has done a good job of starting that process. We have those electronic files now that'll, that'll outlive us and there'll be assets for the future people that fill that role. But because, um, that person's held that position for 10 years and we didn't have the, the, um, the staff that we have now in terms of just the numbers in our, in our administrative staff, we didn't just have the ability to have the depth. So I don't anticipate that there will be in a position like this again in the future. This is just a, kind of a, um, you know, I'm gonna call it a, um, an anomaly. But, um, yes, to answer, you know, your question, we'll do everything we can to make sure that, um, we've got all the resources available, uh, for the future people that's, that's in this role that wouldn't necessarily necessitate the shadowing.
Hey, thank you. So I think, uh, the, uh, Councilmember Chua has, she hit the nail right on the head. It's all about succession planning, planning, planning. Uh, so now I don't have, I don't see any more from the public and any more from the council. So now it's time for the, uh, I think, uh, Councilmember Chua, she made the motion and it was seconded by Councilmember Lynn. So now it's time for the vote.
Vice Mayor Barbadeo?
Aye.
Councilmember Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamb?
Aye.
Councilmember Leeann?
Aye.
Mayor Montana?
And I am an aye. Okay, thank you, everyone. So now moving on to item 19, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we were all very pleased when the Melpetus Public Services Reauthorization Measure, also known as Measure J, uh, was approved by Melpetus voters with over 80% support. As a next step, an administrative step, um, this now comes to the council. Uh, the, the, the workings of, of Measure J, which is, uh, at heart, a transaction and use tax. It's administered by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration. There needs to be an action by the council, in this case, adopting an ordinance that then, um, authorizes, uh, this tax to be collected and to move forward and, and to be implemented, uh, in the timeframe that was approved by the voters. So we have our, um, Assistant City Manager, Matt Kano, here to provide some information about the ordinance implementing Measure J.
Thank you, City Manager Thomas, and thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Council this evening. So, um, as City Manager Tom, Thomas mentioned, on, on August 5th, 2024, um, the city council adopted a resolution for placing Measure J on the ballot. And then, um, thankfully, on November 5th, 2024, over 80% of the voters supported Measure J, which extends our current quarter cent sales tax an additional eight years beyond 2029. Next slide, please. So as City Manager Thomas mentioned, um, we do need to have, um, request council a final adoption of the ordinance. So, um, the recommendation tonight is, um, for the city council to adopt by at least a four-fifth vote, the ordinance 316, approving Measure J, that Public Services Authorization Measure, um, which amends Chapter 4, the Title IX of the Munip, Munip Code to impose a transaction and use tax to be administered by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration. Additionally, we're requesting to approve resolutions authorizing the city manager to execute any and all documents, agreements and instruments necessary to implement and effectuate the provisions of Measure J, including but not limited to those required for administration and collection of the tax, as, as indicated in the agenda report in front of you. Additionally, um, we're requesting that the city, um, council include in their recommendation for the city attorney to provide a reading of the ordinance and, um, uh, request a waiving of the reading beyond the title. And with that, um, we're, you know, excited to be here with this, um, item tonight and I'm pleased with the public support and that concludes our presentation and we're available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Matt. And now call for public comment. Anyone from the public want to make any comments? Okay, welcome, Mr. Montemayor.
Thank you. I just learned, uh, 80% approve or voted for it. And the 20%, I know why the 20%, maybe it would have been 100%, but of course it cost a pocket. So, uh, yeah, um, whatever the plan for it, I, or this, um, adoption of the ordinance, for me, it's, we don't want to be like, suddenly it's 2029 and we don't have 8 million for 2030. So that was a good one. Thank you.
Thank you. And so now we'll have the city attorney read aloud the title of the ordinance.
Uh, Mayor, there would, it would have to be as part of the motion to move to waive reading beyond the title of the ordinance and then I would read the title. Sorry. Then we can do that in that order. Um, the ordinance is entitled, An Ordinance of the City of Melpetus, Adding Chapter 5 to Title, uh, to Title, sorry, Title IX of the Municipal Code to Impose a Transaction and Use Tax to be Administered by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration.
That's it. Okay, thank you. And now call for the motion and a second. Well, okay, Councilmember?
Who else can give the motion?
Councilmember Chua.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to comment and thank, uh, City Manager Matt Thomas and Assistant City Manager, uh, Matt Kano. Great job. And I know how hard you guys worked, uh, with the other department heads to, to get this 80%, I think. So a lot of that came from your hard work. And thank you so very much because we really need this funding for the next few more years. Thank you. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. And I think we have, uh, did you have a comment? Oh, a motion, okay. And I want to just piggyback on, uh, Councilmember Chua's. Yeah, they did work, I want to agree, they worked really hard. They went to every commission, me. wanna agree, they worked really hard. They went to every commission meeting to present their case for Measure J and the public and the community groups. Yeah. So that, then that takes a lot of, a lot of effort. So thank you for that. So we have a motion by council member Lynn. Is there a second? And a second by council member Chua. Okay, call for the vote.
Sorry, mayor, a point of clarification. I'm not sure if, uh, council member Leanne stated what her motion was, if her motion was as proposed by city staff.
Did you get that? City manager, city attorney?
Correct. I understand your, uh, but with the addition that, uh, the, uh, reading of the ordinance be waived beyond the title. Thank you very much, council member.
She said, she did, ditto. Ditto. Okay. Um, who was that? Yeah, the vote, the vote?
Vice Mayor Barbadeo.
Aye.
Council member Chua.
Aye.
Council member Lam.
Aye.
Council member Leanne.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I am an aye. Okay. Thank you for that, everyone. And then- Was there a comment here? Okay. All right. So now we're moving on to, um, items that were pulled from the consent calendar. We're gonna be going over those. And the first one would be- Excuse me. I'm getting over a slight cold here, everybody. So the, uh, we, I think it's C, uh, C8, C11, C14, and I'll go ahead and do C14. That was by, uh, vice mayor, right? Okay. This was approved, the final map, and authorized the city manager to execute the subdivision improvement agreement with Toll West Coast LLC for residential project at 612 South Main Street.
Right.
Got the right one?
Yeah, just a question, because I use, I, most of the time I see this and I wanna understand this, uh, this particular project. The subdivision improvement agreement, the SIA, right? And if you look at, you know, the agreement itself, it says that, uh, in consideration of, uh, us approving, uh, the final map, uh, they will do, uh, the listed public improvements. My, you know, looking at the list of public improvements, are they not standard on, uh, you know, when you construct a, a residential, uh, uh, community? Like putting a sewage, putting a curb? How, how would that be, uh, public improvement? And how would that be a consideration of us, uh, approving, uh, the map?
So I'm gonna, um, I, I think City Engineer Michael Solera, um, should be available online and have, ask him to take the first response to this.
Yes, thank you for that question, uh, Vice Mayor Barbadeo. Um, it is standard. We do require, uh, typically everything, um, in front or within the public right of way for the, um, the developer to construct, for any new sewer lines that they're doing, new connections, water lines, uh, storm drain lines. Uh, typically, we'll have them do a whole new sidewalk and do some street restoration along their frontage. Um, and that's part of the review of the plans. As part of the Subdivision Map Act, it requires that we do a subdivision agreement to ensure that these public, um, util, uh, improvements are, uh, constructed per plan and they are bonded for. So this agreement is, um, our kind of contract with the developer to ensure that these public improvements are completed according to our standards. I hope that answered your question.
And council member Barbadeo, if I might, to add some clarification. Um, the- Sorry, City Attorney Christopher Creach. Assistant City Attorney Christopher Creach. Um, the, uh, the, the rule is, is that prior to approval of that final map, they must construct all improvements that were required in the original approvals unless they enter into a subdivision map agreement, um, agreeable to the city, um, setting forth their obligation to do those. And that's why, as you pointed out in this agreement, it says that, um, the execution of this subdivision, um, development agreement is consideration for the city council's approval of the final map, which is what the developer is asking at this time.
Okay. So I, I, I think I, I got a little bit confused between, uh, public improvement and public benefit, because I used to, uh, see them both, uh, in these kinds of projects. Public improvements now speaks of infrastructure and all those things. And sometimes, uh, which I did not see in this project, public benefits, right? Public benefits such as a park or, you know, some, some murals, something like that. Does this project have, true?
I'm not aware of any public benefits. I think this is a straightforward project. Uh, I can't speak to the entitlements, um, that was required. Uh, I can only speak to, um, really the, the final map and the required public, public improvements for the project.
Okay. Then that's fine. So there's a distinction between, uh, the public improvement as part of the project, as a consideration of, uh, the approval of, uh, the final map and, uh, the public benefit portion. Sometimes that happens, sometimes that does not.
That is correct. Now, you, you hit it on the head with, this is for the benefit of the infrastructure for the project. That's what we're primarily focusing on.
Okay. Well, thank you. Just, just that for the information.
All right. So that's, uh, so you're gonna make a motion to approve it? So we can take a, uh, and then someone second it to take a vote? So you're gonna make a motion to?
All right. I move to, uh, approve. Okay.
Oh, public cl- public cl- comment, please. Anybody? C14. This is the-
I heard a exchange of ideas from the city attorney, uh, the condition, the changes, and from, uh, vice mayor. So I think, uh, you resolved it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So is there, was it a motion by Vice Mayor Barbadeo and then I need a second?
Yeah.
And then it was seconded by council member Lynn?
I will, but I just have to comment, uh, Mr. Montemayor. I think he is like us wanting to go home quick.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, my name. And, and so we, I guess a second. So it's, I guess we can call for the vote now.
I moved to approve the final map, track number 10626, including all offers of dedications stated and depicted upon completion and acceptance of improvements, approve and approve and authorize the city manager to execute the subdivision improvement agreement between the City of Milpitas and Toll West Coast LLC for a residential project at 612, uh, South Main Street.
Okay, it was moved by, uh, Vice Mayor Barbadeo and was seconded by, I thought it was Lynn that seconded. Okay, so it was seconded by council member Lynn. And now we call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Barbadeo.
Aye.
Council member Chua.
Aye.
Council member Lam.
Aye.
Council member Leanne.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I am an aye. Okay, the next one is, uh, item, item 11. Okay. Approve and authorize the city manager to, or designate to negotiate and execute an agreement with K O N E Inc. for the library garage elevator modernization. Um, so I pulled this one because, um, it's been over six months that our elevators at the, our library have been, um, broken. And I guess city was able to have one working, but now we're going to replace both of them. Um, I, I guess what, I guess my, my question is, um, I would like city staff to find out why they were broken and then come back with a report of what you found, what you found. I don't know if there's camera, camera surveillance, uh, some reports from the, um, librarian there, what she knows. And I'd like a report of exactly why it was, they were broken. So that's why I pulled that. So we can take proactive approaches to, so it won't happen again, because we're, you're talking about close to half a million. That's a lot of money.
Thank you, mayor. Assistant City Manager Matt Keno. Public Works Director Christian Drenzo is, is online and can provide some initial responses to your question if you like at this time.
You can come back with a report. It doesn't have to.
Okay, we can, we can provide an information. Would an informational memo to council be sufficient?
Yeah.
Okay, we can do that.
She doesn't have to, yeah. Okay. So, uh, I'm, I'm, uh, asking for a motion to approve, uh, C11 with those directions. I made a motion, I made a motion, so now I'm, I would need a second. Okay, so.
We still need to take public comment?
We still need public comment.
Oh, public comment.
Same thing. I think there's nothing for me to comment. Thank you.
I know, Mr. Montemayor, you just wanna get up there, right? Okay. So, um, so it was motioned by myself, Mayor Montano, and it was seconded by, uh, council member Chua. So now we'll go call for the vote.
Council member Barbadeo.
Aye.
Council member Chua.
Aye.
Council member Lam.
Aye.
Council member Leanne.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I am an aye. Thank you for that. And so now we're going to see nine. As, who is the one that pulled that? Okay. Uh, so council member Lynn put, pulled that one. And that one is to authorize and approve travel requests from Mayor Montano, council member Chua, council member Lynn, and council member Lam to Sacramento on the January 22nd through 24th.
I pulled this one because, um, some of our, um, council members will, will have the budget, the travel budget that will be exceeding the allowance. Uh, this question is for city manager or city attorney. Um, do we need to, first, how do we cover the overage? Um, and if you can address if it's going to be out of the general fund or, uh, borrow one of the other council members to cover, if that is indicated in the policy?
City manager?
Yeah, thanks, uh, council member Lynn. Um, all of the money is budgeted, so there's ten, uh, in the current budget, there's 10,000. We start with $10,000 per, uh, council member to, for, uh, travel and training of this type. Um, if there is an overage, um, it would come out of that same fund. Uh, usually at the end of the year, um, some of the funds are always left over. So it, it, I guess in practice, technically, technically, it would be, it would come from one of the other council members' accounts. But again, it's all in one account and we just, uh, uh, track it or administer it as, as one account. But we, we keep track of how much each person has spent.
Okay.
No, no. It's, it's, as long as it's, you know, from the same pot for all five. Yeah.
Oh, what the?
We have, uh, council member Chua.
I understand it's the same. Thank you, mayor. I understand it's from the same pot, but each council member has our own, uh, designated amount. So do we need to ask permission of that council member if they're okay, if we can get their, their excess or unused funds? Is that how we wanna do it?
I think ideally, if, uh, if council members work that out among themselves, that would be great. If we got to the end of the year and we had expended all of the funds, then we would, we have other travel funds within the city manager's budget that we could take it from that. We have never, you know, to date, we have never, uh, gotten to that point. There's always, it, it depends on how much the council members travel during the year, but we've always had, uh, su- sufficient funds. I would add to that, however, I think as a practice, you know, if it's a small amount, uh, you know, it might be under $500 or something, then we, we can manage that. I think it will, if it was more than that, then yes, the council members should work that out among themselves.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. That's awesome. Thank you, council member Lynn. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Uh, so some clarification. When you, when you said we can manage that, what does that exactly mean?
So within the city manager's office, uh, the, typically, the senior executive assistant, uh, will track those budgeted funds and then provide me or with the assistant city manager with a, a report on where we are in, in any of our accounts. It applies to office supplies as well as my travel account, uh, council travel account, food for, for meetings, that sorts of thing. Uh, we, we track all of that throughout the year. And so, uh, we would know exactly what the amounts are for each council member. In fact, I, I believe there was an attachment to your AR tonight that showed the amounts in each account. And actually, we were, uh, the, the projection of an overage for one of the council members is just an estimate, because we don't know what the actual costs will be until you actually travel and then come back. Um, it, it may break even. So, but we, in an abundance of caution, we noted that there may be an overage based on, uh, projected costs.
Okay. Um, so, for example, like myself, I don't think I have any funds left, uh, for the, um, the mayor's conference in June. But is it in June? Can't remember. It's in summer. So is that after the, is this, so the, the bud, the fu- the bu- the budget that we have now, is it for the next two years or every year?
Uh, every year.
Oh, every year.
10,000 per year. And yeah, as noted in the staff report, uh, with your travel to Sacramento as well as C8, which we, you'll discuss next, the travel to upcoming, uh, Washington DC as well as your previous travel to Long Beach, that will expand all of your, uh, annual allotment for this year.
So that, that means that I could, uh, ask another council member if, if they haven't used their remaining budget? And that's what she asked? Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Just clarification, just wanna know. All right. Um, so council member Lynn pulled this. So do you wanna make a motion? Oh, I, we need public comment.
For the mayor is, this should be a replenishment, right? In his department, she could replenish to add some more budget. And you guys gotta go and represent Milpitas. Make sure that Milpitas will shine in that league. Thank you.
Yeah, you know, I, I just wanna make a comment. You, you are absolutely right, Mr. Montemayor. Um, 'cause I get invited to, uh, to represent the city, but when I don't have funds, I can't go. I can't represent the city. And, and I'm glad that, that council member Chua, she's, uh, recommending, uh, an increase for everyone's budget. Yeah. You know, this is a job. It's okay. All right. So, um, council member Lynn, did you wanna make a motion? Oh, sorry.
Move to approve C9.
Okay, so it was, uh, moved by council member Lynn and, uh, seconded by council member Chua. Let's call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Barbadeo.
Aye.
Council member Chua.
Aye.
Council member Lam.
Aye.
Council member Leanne.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I am an aye. Okay, and then the next item is, um, C8. That one is the, the mayor's, um, conference to DC. And I will give you a bit of history on that. That one is the mayor's conference to DC, and I will give you a bit of history on that. As far as I could remember, it was always only the mayor that attended the conference in Washington DC, but when Mayor Rich Tran became the mayor, he opened it up for vice mayors. And so last year, Councilmember Chua, well, at that time, she was Vice Mayor Chua, she wanted, she had signed up or wanted to go, but then she had an emergency, her husband became very ill. And so this time around, she asked me if I, if she can go with me, and I, I said, yes, she can go, because she missed out on the last one. So, but then, for, this one here is Councilmember Leon wants to attend as well, however, there's best practices to be prudent, that means that there will be three council members there, and, and I, I, I do not agree with this request, with due respect, because there will be three council members going and it's going to be a majority. There's also the distance, it's like all the way across the United States, and also a potential for Brown Act violations, because we do meet with, well, I meet with lobbyists, and so I'm, I'm not going to recommend, but there are other conferences, and there's another one in the summer, so there's always that opportunity. So that's my recommendation is that, and that's, those are my reasons for not, you know, approving that. Is there any comments from anyone? We have Councilmember Leon.
Thank you.
Hold on.
I agree, because I checked, it is open to all elected officials. I'm travel under my budget that's allowed for the year. Back in March of 2024, I attended, also in DC, a conference. With that conference, I brought back the idea of the grant, I shared with staff, and we were successful in securing a 2.9. So this is training, this is conference, and it's related to the city, it is within my budget, so I don't see why I cannot go. And if you're talking about the Brown Act, you can be in lobbying with a group, I don't have to be in the same meeting with you. Just like C9, if you say that without leading the Brown Act, there are four of us that's going to Sacramento two days after that session in Washington, so I just want to point that out.
Yeah, and, and that was just one, but the, the primary one is the distance all the way across the country, the council, the majority of the council will not be available. And I'm thinking, in case of emergency, I, I don't, I don't feel that three should go. I, actually, I think it should still be always just the mayor, but because that was changed, you know, I feel that the Vice Mayor, and because she missed out on her opportunity last year, that's why I feel that only two should go. So I'm making that motion.
Mayor, we do need public comment once again.
Public comment.
As for city council, seem to go, so you got to go, thank you.
Thank you. And, and also, never mind, I was going to say something, but I don't want to, on the, the lobbying, but on that, how much was it, 2.9 million? That was something that was skewed. So, as, again, as I'm saying, I, I need a second.
Mayor, could you please repeat your motion?
I'm sorry, what?
The clerk was asking for clarification of what the motion was.
The motion is, I vote, so city manager?
The item is specific, so don't support that. Deny.
Yeah.
Not authorized.
To not authorize the trip to the mayor's conference for Councilmember Leon. I need a second. Mr. Lamb?
I'll second that.
Okay. And so now, you will have a comment, Councilmember Chua. I think you have to press your button, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. I can, I can see the rationale of the mayor, because it's so far away, and, and we have to have him, just in case, there's a special meeting or not, and, and there's another opportunity, I hope that the Councilmember Leon will, will have the opportunity to go as well, in the very near future, summer maybe, so that's, that's my take.
Any more comments? If not, let's call for the vote. We have a council member, we have Vice Mayor.
For the record, may the city attorney expound on that Brown Act and majority, please?
There is, there does exist under the Brown Act an exception for conferences and similar matters that are open to the public and that address matters of interest to the public or to the elected body to which the Brown Act applies. However, there is a condition upon that, which is that during attendance at such conferences, while a majority may attend, they may not discuss matters within the subject matter of this city council, except as part of the regularly scheduled agenda. So meetings that occur outside of the regularly scheduled agenda of the conference itself are not necessarily subject to that exception, and conversations that occurred during that conference about city business that's outside of, that's outside of the actual agendized discussions for the conference itself may not fall within that exception. And if there is any request for individual legal advice on any subject, the city attorney's office can always provide that to any council member upon request to give them advice and direction.
All right, so just to be clear, as long as everybody behaves, it's fine?
If everyone follows that, that exception, as I've laid out, that exception does allow a majority to be present.
No, it's just a choice of adjective. I just want the city attorney to expound on the concerns with regards to the violation, possible violations of the Brown Act and having a meeting when there is a major presence of majority of the council. And to me, it's clear, right? As long as we abide, not behave by those rules, it's fine. And on my one vote, I believe that, you know, any opportunity that would better each and every one of us regardless, and we bring it back to the city, would be a good opportunity. So I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine with Councilmember Leon going.
As I mentioned, that was the secondary issue, but the main one is the distance, it's the other side of the country, and it just seems that it is prudent that the majority of the council is available, will be available, that's, that's the whole point. Yeah, we've been, we've all been to events where we're all there, and you know, yeah, there's always going to be a Brown Act, a potential for Brown Act violation, but that's not my, my, the superseding argument is that it is all the way across the country. What if the, what if a plane crashes and, you know, the three, three council members, I mean, you just always have to be prudent, just, I'm just, there's a, the weather, I don't know, you just have to be prudent. So I'm, I'm still going to, like I said, there's, with, with due respect, Councilmember Leon, I think it's prudent that only two go, and there's always other opportunities in the summer. That's, and so that's my, my, my motion. I'm sorry? Okay, so we have, I had a motion and there was a second, so let's take the vote.
Vice Mayor Barbara DiO?
I disagree.
Can you repeat that, please?
Nay.
Councilmember Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamb?
Aye.